To the candidate conversations event sponsored by Linwood Today and Say Abla Media. I am Teresa Whipple and I am the founder of Linwood Today and the My Neighborhood News Network. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight and we are looking forward to having a great conversation with our candidates who are running for the November 4th general election, which is just a few weeks away. Ballots are going to be mailed in about a week, so good timing for all of us to hear from them. I wanted to introduce Jaime Mendez, who is my partner in, I'm not going to say in crime, but in adventure for this. We decided we wanted to do this together because he, well, he has an international audience of folks who listen to his broadcast every day via YouTube. He also lives in Linwood, so it seemed like a natural partnership. So, why don't you explain a little bit more about what's happening on your end?
Yes, thank you Teresa. First of all, welcome everybody. Bienvenidos a todos. I want to say hello also to our live audience on Facebook, on Jaime Mendez News Facebook page. Today is going to be conducted all in English, but this transmission will be translated into Spanish and this live would be rebroadcasted also with, I believe, subtitles in Spanish. Yes, my name is Jaime Mendez. I am a journalist, a local journalist, and along with my wife, Diana Oliveros, who's right there, we founded Say Abla Media as a way to maintain Spanish language news in the area, in the region, the state of Washington, because the only newscast that existed at the time, Univision Seattle was closed a couple of years ago, so ever since we started this, and that's why our slogan is keep the news alive, and that's why we do every day, Monday through Friday. We also have podcasts, interview, everything very community-based, and almost everything in Spanish right now, we're making a small exception. So, thank you all for being here. It is very, very important to see that there is interest on this participation, you know, many, many things going on, very big decisions to come up, and thank you also, of course, to the candidates that made the time to be here, to tell us about who you are, what you think about different issues, and also to listen to the audience of the residents in Linwood.
Thank you. And the format will become a little bit more clear as we go along. We did have some candidates at the very last minute today drop out from participating. They did send statements for us to read, so we'll be doing that for those who sent statements to us. But we will have everything timed so that we can keep us moving along and keep us on track, and we have a timer with a phone who will be letting us know via sound on her phone when we get to the end. And that will be both for us when we ask questions for the candidates, when they answer questions, and also when we do the Q and A. You will actually have a time limit on your question, which we hope will be a question and not a statement, and we'll remind you of that, and also the answer. So, that's just some housekeeping there, and if you could make sure your cellphones are turned off, we'd appreciate that. We're going to start with position one because we had two candidates who weren't able to come tonight. We originally had thought that we would have one, and then she, one of them actually just let us know a bit ago that she fell ill, so I am reading the first statement, and Jaime's going to read the second. So, this is from Derica Eskamia. "I truly value every opportunity to connect with our community, but I won't be able to attend the forum tonight. My commitment to this campaign and to the people of Linwood remains steadfast, but right now I believe I may have caught whatever is going around." So, there you go. "I truly am bummed to miss tonight, and I was prepared and ready to go. Please apologize on my behalf and let anyone who has questions or would like to discuss my vision for the city." She welcomes them to reach out to her campaign email, which is dericafrelinwood@gmail.com, and she also has her campaign website. Vote for Derica. So, that is Derica's statement, and I will let you talk about the second candidate.
The second candidate is Dio Burisquez. I knew I was going to mispronounce that. It's a tough pronunciation. I'm sorry. So, he said this statement, "As a proud 10-year Linwood resident, I'm running because I love Linwood and pledge to restore your confidence in our city government. I am dedicated to promoting transparency, accountability, and collaborative leadership to ensure Linwood remains a safe and vibrant city for all residents. In 2018, I became the first member of my family to earn a college degree, graduating from the University of Washington with a bachelor's degree, triple majoring in political science, history, and communication, journalism. More importantly, I am a devoted family man. I am a first-generation American, the proud son of Mexican immigrants. Through financial discipline, I paid off tens of thousands of dollars in student loans. I assist my parents in caring for my special needs sister while maintaining a full-time job. I am an animal lover, especially dogs. I am the labor candidate in this race, proudly endorsed by nine labor unions, including my own, UFCW 3000. As a blue-collar worker, I am acutely aware of the increasing financial burdens faced by working and middle-class residents in Linwood."
And Claire just cut us off. So, I guess he was over a minute, so we'll stop there.
We'll stop there. I didn't purpose with that Latino accent because he's a Mexican. That's the only accent I have. Oh, continue.
All right. This is the kind of evening you're going to have. Okay, so we will start now with the position two, right?
That's right.
And you're going to do the introduction?
Yes, we invite position two candidate Isabel Mata. Thank you. You have, hi, welcome.
Thank you.
You have one minute for an opening statement.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. My name's Isabel Mata. I am stepping up for Linwood City Council so that I can help make Linwood more safe, caring, and inclusive. I decided to run because our democratic values are at stake right now, and we need kind, caring, compassionate, and empathetic leaders in local government who are here to protect all members of our community. Regardless of if you've been here 65 years or two years, you are just as an important member of our community. In my professional career, I am a writer and mindfulness meditation teacher. I also do marketing, and I am passionate about connection. I run a program called Listening Labs that aims to ease disconnection on college campuses and in the workplace, also teaches the skills of active listening. So, those are things that I'm really trying to bring to city council because we are living in a time of extreme disconnection and polarization, and it is really important that we have leaders who know how to sit with that discomfort and have conversations with people that they disagree with. So, thank you for having me, and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Very good timing.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, question number one for you. I'm sorry, you're going to do the opening statement.
We have one more. We have another statement.
Yeah.
So, Ki Sun Cho is the person who is running as Isabel Mata's opponent, and he could not attend tonight because he had an out-of-town business trip. He wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to introduce himself and share his campaign platform. I have a feeling we're going to get, I won't get through all this one either. "With years of leadership in Linwood and as president of several local associations, I have dedicated myself to community service and civic engagement. I helped establish the sister-city partnership between Linwood and Dam Yang." Hope I pronounced that correctly. "Public safety is paramount. I will work with police, schools, and local leaders to make our streets safer and support education on violence prevention. We must give real resources as well as fair oversight to our police. I will work to support community mental health centers to help those in need. I believe in smart, careful growth for our community. I am dedicated to responsible development, particularly near the Linwood Link Light Rail Station. I strongly back affordable housing and small business. As a Linwood business of nearly 30 years, I am well acquainted with the needs of small business and the importance of supporting locally-owned shops," and we'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the first question for you, Ms. Mata, is Linwood has experienced recent incidents of gun violence involving youth. Could you share your ideas on how to address this issue? And now you have two and a half minutes to answer.
Yes, so I think there are a couple of things that come into play when we think about youth gun violence in our communities. The first are the systemic issues that have created this cycle of violence that we are in. The second is there are not enough third spaces in our community for young people to hang out after hours. Teens are bored. The mall closes at 8 o'clock. There's no laser tag. There's no mini putt-putt. There's no 24-hour diner really that they can go and have milkshakes. So, what do they do? They go to the parks. They go to the streets. They go to all of these other places where they're unsupervised, and they're vulnerable. So, one of the major solutions that I think is we need to have more activities and programs for kids, or teens specifically, that give them spaces to hang out and build community in a way that is safe and enclosed, but also gives them space to learn about, you know, community building and different role models. So, I think that that's really, really important. Community serves such an important purpose in our world, and building connection, but you have to have spaces to do that. So, I am a really big supporter of creating more of these third spaces for teens. I also think that when we think about the younger population, that childcare is also a major issue. Where we live in Linwood is a childcare desert, so there are really not a lot of childcare opportunities, especially on traditional hours. So, parents who work multiple jobs, parents who are out until 9, 10 o'clock, starting at 5:00 a.m., there's really nowhere that their kids can go, so they leave them unsupervised. And when kids are unsupervised, they're susceptible to violence and to just shenanigans. So, I want to make sure that we have one childcare that is affordable and equitable for all, especially if you work non-traditional hours. So, I want to have a place for teens to go until 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, where they feel supported and seen, and they have somebody that they can talk to who will actually listen to them. And then second, third spaces are incredibly important. So, I would love to see, you know, a place where they can get milkshakes at the end of the night, a place to play laser tag, a place where they can gather and not have to, you know, just hang out in the parks.
Do you have an example of a third space that if you were going to say this would be my ideal third space, how would you create that? Would you partner with organizations? Or what would be your, how would you go about that?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is look at what organizations we already have that already have buildings in place. So, one in particular that I'm really excited about is the New Linwood Neighborhood Center. That's opening up on 196 and 64th, I believe. They are partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, and they're actually going to have a teen space in this building. So, I am really excited about that, but it only works if it's open late, if there are hours that these kids can actually go to and be supported. Because if it's only open during the hours that they're already in school, then that defeats the purpose. So, I want to really work with the VOA, who is kind of organizing this project with the Boys and Girls Club, to make sure that there is a space that's cool for teens to hang out in. Maybe there's foosball, beanbag chairs, Playstation. Like, I want kids to have stuff to do after hours in a place that makes them feel safe.
Great. And I gave you a little license on some extra time, but we'll make sure the other candidates get the same. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Am I next?
Yes.
All right. So, your campaign slogan is "No One Left Behind." Can you explain how you would put this into practice as a council member?
Yes. When I say "no one left behind," what I really mean is that Linwood is growing at a rapid pace, and that growth really only matters as long as we are taking into consideration the people that have been here for a really, really long time, as well as the new people coming in. So, when I say "no one left behind," I mean that as our city is growing and changing, that we're not forgetting about the people who have made Linwood into what it is today. So, in practice, this means taking in all of the different perspectives as we make policy decisions on city council. So, whether we're talking about the new growth that's going to happen in city center, I want to make sure that we are thinking about the single-family homes and the people that live in South Linwood in order to make sure that the growth in the city does not negatively impact them. I was canvassing this past weekend, and I walked down to an area, and there's all of these beautiful homes, old homes, and then there's the highway barrier, and it's just like this big wall in these people's backyards. And while I think that the growth is important, if it comes at the expense of people who have been contributing to this city for decades, then is that growth that I really want to support? And to me, the answer is no. I want to make sure that if we're growing as a city, that we have to do it in a way that's taking into consideration the diverse group of people that are here and all of their lived experiences. And the only way that we're going to do that is by talking to them. So, thank you all for being here and for giving your perspectives, because that, to me, is what makes, you know, city council great.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Next question. On your campaign website, you call for, and I quote, "strong emergency systems that prepare us for the unexpected." What approach would you take as a council member to implement this?
Yeah, so I am not an expert in emergency services or crisis response, so I really want to lean on the systems that are already in place. So, South County Fire, they put on an amazing emergency expo, I think it was two weeks ago, where people could learn and learn about how to be prepared for an earthquake, how to be prepared for anything that comes their way. So, I want to make sure that we are partnering with the people who provide these crisis response in order to share their teachings and their learnings with as many people as possible. The same goes for Linwood PD. We have a really strong police force in Linwood, but they're only as strong as the people that are advocating for them and partnering with them and getting them in front of all of the different residents. So, I want to make sure that everyone in our community knows exactly what to do in terms of crisis, whether it's weather, disasters, fires. I want there to be processes in place so that people know exactly what to do when a crisis occurs, because if we're preparing by the time it's already happened, then it's too late. So, using our newsletter, Facebook, all these different ways to kind of push this information out, and also offering, you know, just an ear for somebody to be like, "I'm feeling really anxious about this big one that's supposedly coming in the next four, like, few years. What do I do about it?" I can refer them to the people that really have the expertise on the subject. I also think that it's really important that we have, that we give our police force and our crisis responders all of the tools that they need to do their job the best possible. So, for example, with Linwood PD, I think that it's really important that they are set up for success, to do their job well, and sometimes that means that they need additional resources and tools, such as mental health professionals on staff, in order to respond to crisis in a way that really matches the situation, not just a one-size-fits-all. So, it's going to take relationship building and a lot of conversations, and asking our crisis responders, do they have everything that they need in order to be set up for success? And if the answer is no, then it's up to us to work with them in order to figure out how we can best support them so that they can do their job, so that our community feels safe, so that everybody, you know, has that sense of ease that we're all looking for in this life.
Thank you. I think we would have time for questions?
Yeah, questions and answers. So, we are ready for the famous bowl of tickets. Who's the lucky winner? We're going to read all three at once, I think is the plan.
I'll take all three?
And then you can read the numbers, and then if folks could go over to the side there and get ready to go on the mic. We also have, we're really proud to say, we have some students, local high school students, who've agreed to come and ask some questions to represent youth voices, and so they are also going to participate with us, and we're going to have one of them start with their question first.
Go ahead. Should I read the numbers now, so they know who they are?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so the numbers, I'm going to read just the last three numbers in the ticket. 441, ticket 441, 444, and 445. So, ticket 444. You don't have any question?
Well, we'll just put you back in here and draw you another time. How's that sound?
Sounds good. Yeah, so 444 is going to go back there.
Yep.
And 445. There you go. You do everything together. That's good.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Ismael Oliveri, and I go to Linwood High School. I am on the Admin School District Advisory Board, and I had a question that I wanted to ask, and it was about future decisions. So, decisions taken by council members can have long-term impacts on the community, and as somebody who is going to be growing up in the community, impact in the future are very important to me. So, I wanted to ask, what specific policy or project will you prioritize that might not show now, but five, 10 years in the future?
Thank you for that question. I think one of the projects that has been in the works for probably 20 years now is this city center, this downtown. As a resident here in Linwood, I want somewhere that I can go and hang out and get ice cream, walk around, go into different shops, boutiques, something that's locally owned, but a place to gather and build community. But a project like this, which I believe we have a name for it, Northline Village, that's happening kind of near the Light Rail Station, that's like a big project. It's like $30 million. Don't quote me on that, but it's going to cost a lot of money because it's a lot of parking lots and a lot of buildings right now that need to be converted into these multipurpose spaces. So, as I think about the budget and what's going on with the next legislative session, and all of the things that we as a city can do, I want to think about this community space that we want to build, this entire little block neighborhood, and how the decisions that we make today, are they in alignment with that growth that we want to see? So, it's going to take a lot of money, and that money needs to be saved, and it needs to grow, and we need to be making decisions that will allow us to do that project when the time comes. But that's something that I'm thinking about.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great question. Go ahead.
All right. Brief disclaimer. My thoughts are my own and not representative of the Linwood Parks and Recreation Board. My question is surrounding flock cameras, which have recently been installed in the city. They've been subject to some pushback in neighboring communities, including mountainous terraces. So, my question for you is this. Do you support the continued operation of this network?
Great question. I believe that the flock cameras as a whole are a form of surveillance, and in our community, surveillance can be good or it can be bad. When used appropriately, used to, there's a high-speed car chase, and you need to find somebody going some way, that's a situation when it would be good. But there's no need for this data to be stored long-term. So, in regards to the flock cameras, I want to have a really honest and frank conversation with our police chief about how the data's being used, how the data's being stored, and how we can make it sure that our residents are not being surveilled 24/7, because I don't want to live in a surveillance state. But I also believe that there's some technology that helps police officers to do their jobs, and if they really fight for this tool, I'll listen to them and hear what they have to say, but I'm also going to come with the perspective of a resident, and I don't want my license plate in my car and that being stored for unlimited amount of time. That doesn't sit right with me. So, yes and a no. I'm not against it. I'm not completely for it. I want to understand how it's being used in our city.
Should we ask, well, let's ask. Is there anybody else in the audience who didn't maybe put a ticket in a bowl, or who, maybe there's one in here, but we just haven't drawn it yet, that just wants to go ahead and come down and have a question? We're totally fine with that. We're a small group, and we don't necessarily have to make everybody have a ticket. If somebody wants to come ask a question, feel free.
Yeah. And if you don't, well, you should take advantage of this moment. This is it. This is it. But if you don't, I ask a question. Does that's okay?
Of course.
Yeah, but anyone? No? All right. Ask a question. The other candidate said, "I am the labor candidate in this race," talks about labor unions and everything. How would you categorize yourself as a candidate of what?
I would say that I'm a candidate for all people. Our community is incredibly diverse, and through the endorsements that I have, but also the conversations that I have, I'm not just here to represent one particular party. I think their workers and their families are incredibly important, and they make our city run. So, I feel like I represent them. I've been endorsed by a couple of different unions. I've been endorsed by progressive communities. I've been endorsed by Linwood PD. I've been endorsed by so many different people that I think represents that I'm not just here to represent a single entity. I want to listen and hear what people need, and I'm not here for my own agenda or to climb the political ladder. I'm here so that people who have been historically left out of the conversation know that they can talk to me and their voice will be heard, and that I'm going to represent their interests and their needs by bringing it to the table.
Good. Thank you. Thank you much. So, no one, last chance, no one wants to ask a question?
Come on, hit me. I'm ready.
I'll take that as a no.
I have one.
Go ahead.
As long as you did, I'm going to ask one.
Yeah.
So, if you can name, could you name one thing that you think you would bring to the council that absolutely nobody else could duplicate? Your superpower?
Yes. I would say that my superpower is my ability to, I think, listen. Like, it sounds like the simplest thing in the world, but I have had so many different lived experiences in my life. I have lived, I've lived all over the country. I've lived all over the world in different cities and places, and those are lived experiences that I have, but those are experiences that have also introduced me to so many different people, so many different cultures, points of view, perspectives, and nobody else has that. So, when I come to council, I'm able to sit there, and I'm able to listen and truly understand what somebody's saying. Even if I disagree with them about everything, I can sit here and I can say, "I hear what you're saying, and I understand why you feel that way." And when somebody feels understood and they feel heard, you know, the defense barriers go down. We're more likely to be able to work together. And at the end of the day, every person on council, we have the same goal, which is to better our community and to work together to make that happen. So, those are the skills that I have that I think allow me to do that, that I don't think anybody else does.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Now, you have 30 seconds for a closing statement.
Thank you all for being here. I truly believe that the most important part of local government is an engaged citizen, and I say it over and over again because so many people don't show up, and the fact that you all did really matters. So, I urge everyone to continue to show up, to continue to make your voice heard, because even if we don't agree, I'm grateful that you're here, and I will continue to listen and hear, and hopefully we can all work together. Because once again, I'm trying to build a Linwood where no one's left behind, and that means that all perspectives are valid perspectives. So, thank you for being here. Make sure to vote November 4th, and yeah, if you want to canvas with me sometime, please let me know at my website, voteisabelmata.com.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You can applaud for her if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Now, we invite the candidates for the third position, and one of them unfortunately canceled last minute, but we have a statement, and we have Josh Binda here. Thank you very much.
And you can go first with an opening statement.
Awesome, awesome. Is it on?
Yeah.
Well, thank you guys so much for taking your time to be here today. I wanted to briefly introduce myself. My name's Josh Binda. I'm currently the position three holder right now, and I'm honored to be our current city council vice president at the moment. I'm really honored to be here to talk to you guys and just to basically explain why I'm running and why I even got involved in the first place. As someone who's the son of immigrants that came to this country, you know, with nothing but the clothes on their backs, and eventually moved here to Linwood about 13 years ago, when we chose our home, it's really been a journey and an honor to be able to be in this position the last four years and serve. And I really want, I think the theme of my campaign, a theme of what I've been able to do, is moving Linwood forward. When I first got involved about four years ago, you know, Linwood was almost, it seems like a different community almost. Things were changing. So many things were happening, and I think the theme of what I said I want to do with my campaign was focused on things like affordability, opportunity, and safety. And as someone who cares about those issues myself personally, and the reason I do is because those are the same things I feel like I struggled with.
That's the same.
Time is up. Thank you. Now, I'm going to read the statement for Bryce Owens, the candidate. "I was born and raised in Linwood, and now I am raising my own young family here, my wife and our three boys. I want to see more opportunities for people struggling with substance abuse and mental health challenges to receive proper care, not just support after incarceration. By partnering with nonprofit organizations that have proven track records, we can get people to help the need, or they need today instead of waiting on budget corrections. Linwood is quickly becoming unaffordable for the middle class. We need to ensure that skilled labor is paid fairly and not taken advantage of, as is too often the case today in Linwood. We also need to make sure apprenticeship programs are utilized on Linwood projects, giving young people the chance to earn a livable wage shortly after high school. I believe this will also help address public safety concerns among young adults. Another focus of mine is spending opportunities for property ownership for people from all walks of life. While we do need more apartments, we also need affordable homes and condos." I'll stop there. Okay, so, first question for you is, "Linwood prides itself in being a city that is welcome to all. As a city council member, how would you stand up for groups that feel they are marginalized?"
That's a great question, and I think that springs a lot to how I even got involved in city politics. I was originally before previously the chair of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, and that was something I really cared about, was making sure that we were championing the voices of all members in our community. Everyone felt seen, heard, and represented, and we wanted to really bring that to the table. And something we've been really advocating for, at least I've been really championing and wanted to advocate for, is making sure that we're having all those voices brought to the table when we're making decisions, making sure all perspectives are being taken into account, and making sure that everyone feels like their lived experiences also matter in these things as well. And sometimes, you know, on the dice when I've made those decisions, sometimes sometimes they're popular and sometimes they haven't been popular. But it's something that I really cared about was making sure that everybody's voice and everybody felt like they at least had a voice and a say in some of these decisions that we've made and the growth of our city and the decisions we've made in terms of our budget and the cities we've made in terms of our public safety. I think someone brought up flock cameras. That's been an issue that somebody, that people have been bringing it up in terms of marginalized communities, how that affects them. There's just so many decisions that when you have different people from different walks of life and it impacts us differently, we have to make sure that all the voices in the community are being brought to the table in that way. And I think that's something that I've been able to really bring my perspective and my voice and what I feel like a lot of the community members feel like they cared about to the table. And that's something I've really taken into consideration and look forward to continue doing in my position if I was to hold it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick follow-up? I hope I have time. I heard you mention flock cameras, and I know that Isabel Mada talked about that briefly too. Do you have an opinion on those?
I do have an opinion. And, you know, originally as a council, I think we all voted unanimously to approve the flock cameras. And even in my original statement when I approved it, I was very cautious and very wary of it because I understood, you know, that there are some potential security issues and potentially, you know, things that could impact certain community members that would be more probably surveilled than others, depending on their circumstances, depending on things they have on their record or et cetera. Currently, right now, I'm in a position where I have been overthinking or thinking about it and where I really stand on it. And I'm not sure where I stand on it at the moment. I think there's been a lot of things that have come up and issues that have been brought up about flock cameras from community members that feel like they feel targeted. You know, a lot of things are happening right now with ICE and a lot of things are happening right now with marginalized communities that they feel that they're not safe right now. And I think it's important that when we talk about that, that we're looking at that perspective. So I'm in current decision-making of that, looking that over.
Thank you. Sit next to me. Sorry. I lost track. All right. The next question relates to business growth and development. What steps do you think Linwood should take to be more friendly to those wanting to establish a business here?
I think there's a lot of steps Linwood could take to be more friendly to business. I feel like Linwood, for its long time, has a lot of our small businesses here and a lot of things here that have been a staple in our city for a long time. And I think as we're growing, you know, we have light rail coming in. A lot of new people want to come and invest and bring growth here. I think being open-minded to different types of businesses that represent maybe things we haven't, we don't have here as well, represent different industries, whether that's tech, whether that's et cetera. I think there's certain industries in our community right now that we don't have here. We've been known as a retail bed-bone retail city for a long time now. And I feel like it's time to expand and to also bring in other types of businesses that could be a pretty big staple here in our city as we continue to grow. And really being open-minded to that and finding avenues and allowing those partnerships and those developments to come here and want to be a part of our city just as much as we have the current businesses here as well, while also elevating the current businesses and bringing more opportunities to them matters too. But I do think there's a lot of opportunity with where we're at right now. I think we're at a very pivotal point in our city. And it's really going to take a lot of openness and I would say innovation to really get the city to be the growth-oriented-minded city that we want it to be, but also have the preservation of what represents Linwood and create ourselves an identity here that stays here. And I think that's very important, and that's something that I'm really open to. And as a younger person, I'm 25 right now. I see a lot of things differently. And I also look at the world from where it is right now and try to see and bring that perspective to the table, what I see, but also understand there's, you know, other things here that also have a culture here to bring that and to keep that here as well. So I think it's bringing both avenues to the table and holding that true and trying to bring those things to the table as well.
Thank you. Next question is, "How could the city do a better job of helping those who are unhoused and often facing substance abuse and mental health issues?"
That's a really great question. And this is something that why lived experience, why perspectives are so important? Because depending on your lived experience, depending on where you've grown around, depending on what you've seen, your perspective on this issue of public safety of unhoused and all of that really changes. As someone, I originally grew up in Section 8 housing in Providence, Rhode Island. I've seen people struggle with drug addiction. I've seen people struggle with unhousness. And that perspective of where, how intersectional that is with crime, how intersectional that is with public safety as a whole, and being able to see the lens of how they all kind of interconnect and why it's important that we find options for people, whether that's rental assistance, whether that's housing. Housing leads to so much. People that don't have housing leads to crime. People that lead to crime leads to a whole complex of systems that set up people to fail and get back into a cycle. So really finding a way that we can house people through programs that we have, that we are investing in. I think the city took steps in terms of investing in things like VOA, where we wanted to do rapid rehousing with people that were struggling with homelessness, things that we did in COVID also as well with our funds. We really want to help with rental assistance, but also making sure we're setting up pathways. I think we just had our big housing hope that we just had a groundbreaking for. That's going to be a game changer in our community when it comes to housing people that need it the most. But it's really investing in that, finding ways to make sure that we are taking care of the people that are going to be struggling. And there's a lot of things happening at the federal level right now that's trickling down to the local level. Things are being cut, Medicaid, SNAP. A lot of people are on their last dollar. And the reason that it's going to struggle with housing, people are having to choose between food and rent. People have to choose between so many things right now. And we really have to continue to find ways to advocate for those that so they don't have to end up on the streets. And that leads to crime and that leads to so many things. And mental health, that's something that's huge with our youth, with our young people, but even with our older generation as well. A lot of people are struggling mentally with things that are happening in the world, with so many things. And making sure we're investing into that. I know the city invested with ARPA funds into, I think, mental health conditions to our local schools. That was something we put money towards and look forward to advocating on behalf of. But there's so many other ways that we need to continue to find ways to support people that are struggling with mental health in our city, in our community. And I'm really hoping to continue bringing those advocacy. I know I've done it from a youth perspective, but there's just so many other ways to also do it as well. And I'm hoping that I continue to bring those things to the table and advocate for solutions in that way.
Thank you.
All right. It's time for questions again. Do you want to draw three tickets out?
Let's do it.
Maybe some of those same people who didn't want to ask a question before will want to ask a question now.
One, two, and one more.
And we would love to have a... We'd love to have the youth voice have their question too. When do you want to ask a question first? After... And he'll read the tickets so you can line up. Others can line up.
Okay. So the tickets are last three numbers. Again, 444. Not yet, okay? Well, guess what? 445. Well, the truth is that we have very few tickets. You do have... Okay, so I'll hold on to this one. And then 463. Ticket 463? There you go. Thank you very much. You can have a seat and wait for your turn. And then again, appreciate if you make a question, not just a statement. Thank you. And by the way, if you didn't get a ticket or you still want to ask a question for future candidate, Deanna will provide more tickets.
We have lots of tickets.
We have lots of tickets. Go ahead.
Hello? Hello? My name is Scarlett, and I'm a high school senior. I also serve as a student representative for the Edmonds School District Board of Directors. Mr. Bindah, you mentioned the importance of being able to hear all the perspectives of different groups of people. My question for you today is, how can you make sure that the voices and concerns of youth in Linwood are heard? And what steps can you take to make sure that marginalized communities of youth have representation?
Awesome. And thank you again, Scarlett. I was happy to talk to you earlier. I actually ended up speaking at your high school a couple of years ago. And seeing you here now is actually awesome. Something I really, as a council, were focused on. And I was happy to also help work on this with our councilman Eskamia, who's not here today, is we are establishing our city youth council. It's the first-ever youth council we've ever had in our city. And the whole goal is to get young people involved, actively engaged, and making sure that they have a voice and they're bringing their voice to the table from a youth perspective. And so making sure that we want to hear from you guys. We want to know what the issues are. I think as we get older, sometimes we tend to think we know what the youth are struggling with. And we tend to think we know exactly what the issues are. And the world changes. Things happen differently. Things are done differently. And it's really important that you are bringing in those younger voices that understand what the world is today and can advocate on their own behalf as well. And that was something that we really saw a need in our city. And all of our councilmembers voted on getting that passed this year. And so we're looking forward to establishing that and hopefully getting some of you young Linwood people involved here on our commission to serve. When it comes to marginal...
Time is up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Marsha Smith. And I have a question for Josh. I used to participate in the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for Linwood. And I'm wondering how you feel it is working right now?
That's a great question. Right now, and this is at a federal level, DEI has been under attack. And it's really hard. We, as a city, unfortunately, just let go of our DEI guy that was serving in his position. So it is something that is, it needs as much help as it can get. And we really need community to stand up and really advocate for diversity, equity, inclusion right now. I think we need to continue recognizing and putting people in these positions to, that bring that lived experience, that bring that kind of perspective to the table now more than ever. With so much going on, the polarization with attacks, I really think investing in DEI and standing strong on it right now, as it's being cut in so many different, you know, businesses and orgs, we really can't afford to take steps back. And I really want to make sure that, you know, for me that cares about DEI working, got involved through that specifically. I think making sure that, you know, we're having people still join our DEI commissions, still going on a community, representing that issue specifically, but not just doing it from a commission standpoint, but actually the work that brings that to our community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Forrest Baum. I really appreciate this. I think this is a great... You know, it's great to get you all out here. And I was... When I first moved here, the first political thing that really, that brought me out was this sort of like huge response to talking about recovery and, you know, like being concerned about our children and everything. And, you know, I was hoping to ask your opponent because this is all public records, records, but I'm wondering if you can talk about what it's like in the media, because I don't think that the media is sort of telling the full story.
I'm not going to speak too much about my opponent and what he has going on, but I will speak as someone whose mom was an alcoholic and who has family members that have struggled with substance abuse and community members have struggled with substance abuse. It is something that a lot of our community members have, that is something that we should embrace. And I think as a city, we are doing what we can to support those individuals. We, you know, we have our methadone clinic that we opened up to support people that are struggling with addiction, so they get off of certain things. I know my mom, who's recovered now, you know, it took her years of battling that issue to really recover from that as well. And, you know, those people can come back into society and serve and do so many things and do better. So as something that, that is, and I know there's, it's important to separate, you know, addiction from things that have happened, et cetera. But I really want to emphasize how we need to continue to fight on behalf of people that are most vulnerable, that struggle with issues, because they also do good in our community, continue advocating on that.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have 30 seconds, Mr. Vinda, for a closing statement.
My closing statement today is, this city has meant a lot to me since my family and I've moved here. I love the city. I love to see the growth that we're happening. And my slogan for this campaign has been moving Linwood forward. And that's something I really care about. I really care about the direction the city is going. I really care about the growth. I'm looking to eventually get married, hopefully I can, and start a family and have kids and grow this city. And I care about the vision. I care about that, because I care about my future in this city as well. I would be honored to hopefully get support in that avenue. Hopefully, we can all come together and really decide how we want the city to be built and grow. And I'm looking to hopefully be a part of that and represent you guys' voice in that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You can applaud, yes? Thank you very much. Okay, now, we are going to invite the candidates for position five. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Travis.
Okay. So, we invite Mr. Npiba Mugambi and Robert Luthweiler. Thank you very much. We're going to start with opening statements. And, Mr. Mugambi, would you like to start? You have one minute.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
My name is Npiba Mugambi, and I'm running for Linwood City Council, position five. I moved to this city, this beautiful city, in 2016, and I've been a resident since then. I'm a father of four boys and a husband. I'm a social worker by profession. Every single day, I wake up to work with people in crisis and helping them solve problems or situations. I'm also a lecturer at the University of Washington School of Social Work. I'm here to serve our city in a transparent way by prioritizing affordable housing, public safety, and supporting our small businesses, which are the backbone of Linwood City. I believe that Linwood should be a city where everyone, regardless of their background, can thrive and pursue their American dream. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for staying within the time. Mr. Luthweiler, one minute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Robert Luthweiler. I have had the privilege of serving on the Linwood City Council for the last seven months. I am an Army veteran. I completed a combat deployment to Afghanistan. And thanks to the GI Bill, I was able to attend and receive my graduate degree here at the University of Washington. And I'm also a former member of the Linwood Planning Commission. I, in my day job outside of council, I work hard on behalf of workers and retirees, protecting their hard-earned money, protecting their savings, looking out for their best interests. I moved to Linwood in 2018. That is where I became a first-time homeowner. I love Linwood. We have a lot of things to be proud of here. And I think we have a lot of exciting things on the horizon. But we also have a lot of challenges right now. And, you know, it's, what we're going through is unprecedented. I believe I have the right experience and I have the commitment to get us through the storm together and come out stronger. Thank you.
Time.
Great. Well, it's so nice to have two candidates. Thank you both for coming tonight, because we actually structured this whole event around this format with having two of you. So, this is going to be the first time we're going to do it this way, so hold on. So, this is the concept. We're going to start with a topic area, but unlike the previous, where we just had one person answering a question, we're going to, the idea is to, for you guys to talk to each other a little bit, have a discussion. And the first topic we're going to discuss, I'm going to ask you to first give your initial impression in 30 seconds of the answer to this question. And then, we get to dive deeper for about four minutes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, here we go. So, in 30 seconds, provide your general view of how the city should be managing population growth and housing density, and we'll talk in more detail after that. But 30 seconds, and Mr. Luthweiler, you can go first.
Well, I would say how we handle the growth is, at this point, largely driven by the state legislation that has directed us quite a bit. And so, within the framework they give us, we have some flexibility. And most of our growth is occurring in the city center area and along arterials. We now have more housing options that are being allowed in our residential neighborhoods. For myself, what I want to see us do is provide as much flexibility and variety for people to find housing that fits their needs.
Wonderful. Thank you. Same?
You will all agree with me that Linwood has changed from what it was a few years ago. It's, the population is growing so high, we have the light rail, and therefore, we need to take steps. Any city like Linwood should focus on diversifying its zoning, so that we can open to constructing developments or having developments that can, that can be accessed by low-income earners like micro studios. This is something that we do not have. At the same time, we also open up, we should open up to smart construction.
Time. Thank you.
Great.
So, we do have time for a little bit detail on that.
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there, so I heard you talk about microhousing. I heard you talk about there are state regulations that we're having to work within. But what, between the two of you, what do you think is the easiest way to get started with maybe getting some more affordable housing in Linwood?
I can go fast.
This is a four-minute discussion, so we have some time.
That's great. So, when you look at the city of Seattle, and one of the reasons why I'm giving Seattle as an example is because every single day, it's where I work and I outreach clients in micro studios. That's the only way we can try to solve homelessness. We're talking about individuals that have minimum-paying jobs, that cannot manage an entire, or a market-rate studio, or a one-bedroom apartment. Having micro studios allowed to be constructed in our city, it means we are going to give them an access to housing. At the same time, we are going to create an opportunity for young graduates or first-time employees, folks in college, to be housed without having to move away from their city or to go work, stay, to work in a different city and also stay in a different city.
Yeah.
Well, what the city has done recently is, we passed our comprehensive plan and our unified development code, which essentially just provide a lot more flexibility of what types of housing are allowed and where we can build them in Linwood. And that's what I want to see us continue focusing on, is have we provided the right flexibility to allow housing that fits everyone's needs, whether you are an empty nester, maybe wanting to downsize but not need to leave your neighborhood, or you're wanting to move out of an apartment and move into a larger home for your growing family. So, we've taken steps to allow a lot of this. And I think, number one, we need to stay focused on working with developers, working with our nonprofits, to eliminate any other barriers that still exist that are slowing down their ability to build the homes that we need. The other thing that doesn't get talked about a lot with housing, and it goes back to the approach that we have to follow based on state legislation, is a lot of housing opportunity in Linwood and most cities is only allowed, the greatest density is allowed along arterials, so roads like 196 or 99. And when I think about the homes that we're building for families and what those roads look like right now, I just think about how unsafe they are, how unhealthy they are, the low quality of life. So, that's another area I want to see the city council focused on, is as we are creating this plan to create city center, create more housing, more density along these roads, be thinking about what those roads look like for the kids that are going to be moving there, the families, the parents, the couples wanting a place to walk. Because right now, I think everyone who lives in Linwood can picture 99 and a lot of our roads. And I don't think those are places that we would want to live. And I think the young families and the residents that are going to make that their home, I think they deserve better.
Thank you very much.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, I would like to add something. And I agree with what Mr. Luthweiler is saying, but at the same time, we have to also look at corporate housing ownership, which is a very big problem in the United States. When you look at, I think the statistics were for 2022, whereby almost 13% of properties that were bought, were bought by corporations. I understand we might not have the power as a city to absolutely stop that or regulate that, but we can work with other elected officials like the council, the county councils, and the state legislature.
Thank you.
To limit the amount of properties that can be owned by corporations.
Time is up, but thank you. Next question. Both of you have stated on your campaign websites that transportation and mobility are key issues for Linwood. As a city council member, what's one change you would suggest, and you had only 30 seconds for this to start with, to make Linwood more user-friendly to all those who use the roads?
One of the things I'm working on right now is working with our Public Works Department on putting forward a plan for a Vision Zero or a similar type of proposal that says our roads should be built with your safety and your quality of life in mind, not just the people driving through Linwood. To do that, it's going to obviously require a greater commitment than what we've done. We have underfunded roads significantly for decades. But we have a great plan that exists on paper. A lot of thought went into it. I want to revisit that with our Public Works and prioritize it.
Time. Go ahead.
As someone who has used public means and also private means, I have walked our pavement. I believe that construction of roads should communicate to the equity of, should communicate to the equity of, the equity goals of our cities. Whereby, you'll find some neighborhoods that have pretty bad pavements or shoulders, that shouldn't be the case. I believe we have to.
Time. We do have time for, to develop more, and if you want to continue, just finish and expand on that. Go ahead.
Yeah, because we're supposed to have.
You will, excuse me, English is not my first language, so I have to speak slow. And naturally, I'm a slow speaker. So, you will notice that when cities are growing, development sometimes is focused in certain areas and not every area. I would like public roads to be equitably invested in, whereby even those neighborhoods that are deprived of such developments, or neighborhoods that have low-income earners, like, for example, the Highway 99, they receive the same opportunities of having good roads and pavements as other neighborhoods.
Yeah.
We could talk about this all night, so you'll have to keep me on track.
You have more or less two minutes.
You know, I am a transit user. I have been using transit as, you know, almost my primary method of transportation for going to school, going to work, since about 2015. So, I've seen what King County looks like, community transit, sound transit, buses, light rail. Transportation is the second-biggest expense for most households, and it's gone up steadily over the last several decades. I think it's now 25% or so of household budgets. And so, when we talk about affordability and transportation, you know, being such a big part of the budget, it's just another reason why we need to get it right. When we build a city designed around transit, you know, we have to be thinking about, how are we getting to light rail, to transit centers? How are we getting to grocery stores, pharmacies? Some people can walk, some people can bike, some people can do a combination of that, they get to the bus. We have to be thinking about all of those types of transportation on equal footing with driving a car. It doesn't mean getting rid of the ability to drive, it just means you have a choice on how you get around your city, rather than being told, if you want to have a first-class experience in Linwood, you better have a car, you better have the money to buy a car, and you better have the ability to drive a car. And if you can't, your quality of life is seriously degraded. So, transportation is, you know, foundational to affordability, climate, just, you know, basic human dignity of having your right to mobility throughout your city.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep talking.
And efficiency. So, when you look at how our road system is working, especially our public transportation operates, I've waited for like 10 minutes or 15 minutes for a bus, and sometimes 30 minutes. That's not equitable. Think about a parent who has to pick up a child from a daycare, or think about someone who has to go work, and probably there is traffic, having to wait for almost 30 minutes for the next bus to come. So, we need to invest in transportation and probably buy more or purchase more buses to make sure that every neighborhood has equitable transportation.
And maybe I'll try to briefly end with just saying, you know, it changes always hard, and Linwood is definitely in the middle of a big transition, and that requires long-term vision of where we're trying to get to and being willing to work through some difficulties and doing what we can to manage that for the people who currently live here. It's going to be a challenge. There's a lot of things we can do to boost housing around the light rail, transit-oriented development, where you can live close to the transit center, you can live close to places you need to be for shopping and eating out and doing things that don't require a car. And I think we're on the right track.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, third question. Both of you have also mentioned improving public safety is a key component of your campaign. Again, in 30 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Mugambi first. Explain what you would focus on as a council member to do this. So, one thought about improving public safety if you were elected.
When you look at public safety, I believe it should be community-oriented. So, public safety should, is a collaboration between the community and our law enforcement. One of the council members talked about providing services or hiring MSWs or MHPs, mental health professionals. That's part of the public safety. I personally volunteer at the Linwood, with the Linwood Police, whereby we.
Time. We'll have more time for, to develop. Yes.
I think public safety is, we need a comprehensive approach that includes law enforcement, traditional law enforcement, but it doesn't stop there, obviously. I am proudly endorsed by the Linwood Police Guild, and I think our police department is doing a lot to try to provide that foundation of public safety. But their staffing levels are still trying to recover from the 2008 recession, which is hard to believe, but that's almost 20 years ago, that our police staffing has never recovered from the cuts we made 20 years ago. So, we need to, we need to have that strong foundation and build off of it.
Time. But again, you can continue, and then we'll invite Mr. Mugambi to continue.
Yeah, and I would just say, so that's the foundation, and then we have to build on it with mental health, resources, community resources, providing people treatment as early on as possible, so that they don't end up in these terrible situations. And I think the frustration that you'll probably hear from others on the council is, those types of programs, the resources that are community-oriented or designed for, you know, providing people mental health, so much of that comes from grants. And all of those grants have gone away from the county or the state or the federal government. And my view is, you know, if those are essential to the city, and we say they are, you know, in my view, essential services are not built on grants that we don't control. They should be built on a revenue source that the city controls that is as stable as it can be, because that need is always there. And it should not be built on grants that are subject to going away, you know, every year.
Yeah. Thank you.
I usually ask myself, why should someone trained to respond to violence show up when it's a crisis? And that's the need for individuals who are being trained to respond to crises with compassion and empathy. One way of kind of reducing the violent interaction between our law enforcement and probably our most vulnerable members of our community is making sure that we hire police officers who are trained in that line, or also train them very well, so that they can respond with compassion and empathy. At the same time, when we talk about public safety, I mentioned collaboration. You cannot eliminate our young people from the picture, especially black and brown young people or the youth. Our city hasn't created an opportunity for our young people to express themselves. You talk about crime, these are individuals who will always go, maybe do graffiti in the park or somewhere where it's not allowed. That's a crime. It's not safe. We don't know what else will come out of their interaction there. Why don't we create opportunities for them to fully express? For example, let's put murals, opportunities for them to do graffiti. We need to include our young people in decisions when it comes to public safety. That's it.
Thank you. You care to?
Yeah. I think the youth are a huge part of this, and I think, as we've talked about, we have the Youth Council, which I think will be a great incubator to start generating more ideas that we can try to build on. We need to be more involved, like I said, as early on as possible, working with the school district to provide counselors and the support embedded in the school districts, just to be able to be on hand and accessible to kids in the classrooms in the school to keep them from getting on the wrong track. And again, a lot of those resources have unfortunately been cut back, or they're just at risk. And, you know, the city is obviously going through a budget crisis, and we have a lot of hard decisions ahead to get us back on sound footing. But certainly, I think that should be a north star for us, is how do we get these types of resources funded that the city can say, this is, you know, truly a priority for us in, you know, not just words, but in the actions, by having those positions available and out there in the community doing good.
Do we have?
And addition to that, cities have buyback programs for weapons or guns that are non-registered. This is one of the areas I would like to see our law enforcement and our city invest in, so that you can buy back the illegal weapons that are out there in the community or that are being used by our young people. Probably, we shall increase the safety in our neighborhood when we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to the Q and A.
Q and A. Let's see if we have a, anyone wants to ask a question to the candidates, hopefully?
Only two left. Oh, man.
Are you serious?
Serious. But that doesn't mean more people can't come ask questions.
Absolutely. So, guess what number? 444. Not yet. He's making, you better have a very good question, because now I'm intrigued. 451. That's you.
No, she's got one.
You want to?
Come on down.
Yes, yes.
And if we could get one of our youth folks to stand up and ask a question, that'd be great.
Yes, we'll start with the youth.
Hello again. My name is Ismael Bivary. I'm a low-code high schooler. I'm a junior, and I am on the school board advisory. I know that public transportation was touched on earlier and how we could be improving infrastructure. What I wanted to ask wasn't what needs to be changed, but what steps will be taken in order to facilitate this change?
So, we obviously rely.
We rely on community transit to provide the actual service, and so we can influence them as much as possible, but we don't control that. What we do control are, do we have sidewalks? Do we have bike lanes? Are you able to walk to the bus stop? Can you bike there? Those are the things the city can control. We just have to decide it's a priority and we're going to invest in it. That's where, I mentioned a little bit ago, I have a desire to work, or I'm working with the Public Works, and my desire is to put forward a concrete plan to start implementing Vision Zero and start implementing some of the transportation planning that we've already done for building out all of the missing gaps in our bike lanes, building out the gaps in our sidewalks. That's the part we can control, and that helps bring all of the pieces together. And then, we can keep, obviously, poking and prodding community transit to provide more frequent buses, more bus stops, all of that inter-service, the inter-city services that we need.
I believe we should also focus on participatory decision-making when it comes to making such decisions. And one of them is you being on the Youth Council and showing up to give out your views. This is how councils receive, you receive views and make decisions. That's the first step. We cannot know how many bike storage facilities that are needed along a highway, let's say Highway 99, or close to the light rail, so that folks can store their light, their bicycles without hearing from the people like you. So, some of the steps that needs to be taken, it's hearing from you, and therefore, focusing on implementing and maybe finding funding for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Marsha Smith again. And you mentioned zoning, basically, and you mentioned transportation and walkability and bicycling. You just answered some of my questions. And in many cities, walkability means you can walk down the stairs and find a coffee shop, or walk a block and go to 7-Eleven, or actually, in Japan, which we may have now, pretty soon is better 7-Eleven.
Oh, we have to get to the question.
The question is, can you promote better sidewalks and better paths in bicycling? And I think you've answered it with your previous answer, so.
But you can answer it again.
Well, yeah, I would say we can, and let's work on that. Well, yeah, I would say we, we can, and, and let's work on that. And then the other part is legalizing the corner stores and, and the things that you talk about. You know, one of the things I talk about with a lot of people is, you know, raise your hand if you love downtown Edmonds, and most people who have been there love it. And then we say, why do we make it illegal to build that same type of community here in Linwood? And people, you know, and it comes down to zoning, and a lot of these policy things that, you know, you gotta get in the weeds, but, you know, fundamentally, it's just, we made it illegal to build that here in Linwood, but we love it, so let's make it legal, and then let's get great developers in here, boutique shops, and, you know, let's create a really vibrant Linwood.
Mr. Mugabe, you?
Yes, you, you talked about probably getting down the stairs and going to the store. It all comes back with diversifying our zoning. You, I, I am one of the strong advocates of looking at a Linwood 10, 20 years from now, anti-big corporations coming in to build car dealerships all over, instead of us inviting investors or developers to construct medium-sized malls to afford you going down the stairs and access a store close to you. Why do, we have, we already have very many big, very many big dealerships. Why do we invite another dealership? So, we need to incentivize, incentivize those developers who are going to construct those stores, who are going to construct those malls, and it will also increase on the business innovation in our community.
Could have the library have a branch at the mall, or a store.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I got the golden ticket. Thank you for everyone's lack of participation, having the last one. I'm here to talk about police funding. For that, there was a mention of, about the staffing of a police, and I think that term that's not staffed since 2008 is a little misleading. Usually, the police is staffed by how much the population is. There's usually a ratio. Back in 2008, Linwood Police were three times more the population, and that's because-
We need to get to the question.
It was, it was, it was, it was explaining, three ti- times more. I don't, that's because of incoming people to go to our stores and retail. That has only increased. But part of that service, rather than this calling, is having the police provide retail security, something that people do not actually appreciate. They believe that funding should be by the retail, not on by us, the retail. So, that is my question, is if the staffing, which is perfectly fine, if you're gonna get supposedly more, how are you basing that number of staffing? Thank you.
It's a great question, and it's true. You know, our police is not staffed for Linwood as a city and our population of 45. It's also this huge retail hub that, that we are fortunate to have, and our calls for service that the police department deal with are significantly higher than many neighboring cities. So, our police are putting in a great deal of work beyond what other cities do. I mentioned, you know, we're going through a budget crisis. One of the things that I have asked for us to explore are, you know, ways to raise resident, ways to raise revenue that don't disproportionately burden the citizens, and like the, like we, like we talked about, a lot of this need comes from the business. How do we get the businesses to help chip in a little bit more to provide that? I want us to explore things like a BNO tax, Business and Occupation Tax, see if that's feasible, see if it makes sense for the types of businesses we have, so that the, you know, the businesses are just paying a little bit more to help with this service that, that we're providing them.
Already, our community is struggling with a lot of taxes that we get to pay and a lot of fees. You'll agree with me, we are working with an extremely volatile economy, and our small businesses are struggling in the same way as we do. I believe, instead of having them pay more money into this to make, to make Linwood more safer for them, we just need to expand our volunteer program to invite community members to be part of the community policing that we, that I'm advocating for. Safety is collaboration with community. It's not just a one institution thing, that it's only the law enforcement that have to keep our cities safe. And this is what I do every time I show up to volunteer with the police. I'm not paid, I just show up because I want my kids to live in a Linwood that is safer.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I'd like to invite you for closing statements. Do you have a preference, who, who to start?
We are, our city is at a difficult time, you will all agree with me. Whereby, safety is a concern, homelessness is a concern, and definitely, the future of our businesses are a concern, including our taxes. We need policies that are going to move our city ahead, and I believe I'm the most qualified individual to work with my colleagues, come up with policies that are going to make it possible for our city to be affordable and safe for everyone.
Thank you.
I would just say, we've talked a lot about very important issues tonight, housing, transportation, public safety, affordability, making Linwood accessible to everyone. Those are things I've been working on as an advocate, as a resident, as a planning commissioner, and now as a council member. I want to keep working on that, that's why I'm asking for your vote. I want city council to get back to delivering results that matter to you, improving your lives, making Linwood better for the people that live here today, and setting it up for success for the people that will move here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great job. Applause, please. So, I am just going to say, as I give this bowl back to Diana, I am sure all of you want to ask questions of the mayoral candidates, yes? They're up next. So, put tickets in the bowl, please, or just, we'll call on you later. Could you please both come up?
The, the idea of the tickets is because we thought you had so many burning questions for these candidates, that we had to control it somehow, or otherwise, we'll have a long line, but maybe I was wrong. Or maybe you're too shy, but this is the opportunity. In any case, even if you don't have a ticket and you have a question, I believe we will have time for, for some of these questions. Well, thank you both very, very much for being here. George Hurst is already a council member, and Kristin Frisell, many of you know both of them, current mayor of Linwood, thank you both for being here.
And we will start with opening statement with Mayor Frisell.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for putting on this forum. Our community needs to be knowledgeable about who we are, as we're asking for your vote to run this amazing city. I grew up in Linwood. I was born the same year that our city was, and it's been through a lot of changes. Every time I look around, there, there's new development here, new development there. As a child, I didn't, I didn't care what happened with my city. As a teenager, I didn't care. My first job was at Linwood Library. I went to Meadowdale High School. I got ignited with the passion for accounting of all things, and went on to get my bachelor's degree from Central Washington University on the Edmonds campus. I still didn't care much about the city, things just happened around me. It wasn't until I took a class that the city offers called Linwood University, and during that class, at that time, it was eight weeks, and I'm out of time already.
It's only 30 seconds.
Take Linwood University.
Yes, we will, we will, we will have time to, to develop some, some of these. Mr. Hurst.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Hello, I'm George Hurst, and I'm in my third term as on the city council. Since I only have a minute, I'm gonna be very concise, but as your future mayor, I'm ready to fix the challenges that Linwood has had over the last four years. I know my opponent has claimed that she has proven fiscal responsibility, but the biennial budget she created has put Linwood into a general fund deficit over $21 million, and I'm ready with a plan to address the greatest fiscal crisis in Linwood's history. My opponent has also claimed she will keep Linwood safe, but last week, the police chief showed the city council an organization chart that had 20 vacancies in the Linwood Police Department, and this is unacceptable. There are seven city departments, and during the current mayor's term, five of the seven department directors have left. It's time for a new mayor. The residents of the city deserve it, the employees of the city need it. We can do better, and I have the experience and vision to make sure Linwood will recover and once again be the greatest city in South Sowish County. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you saw how we did the last round, so you know kind of what we're trying to do here. We are gonna start with a question that will, will have a 30-second first take, and then we'll get into more details with the discussion. And you brought up the budget, and that actually, shockingly, is the first question. So, that's been something that's been at the top of people's minds, and if you could each, and I'm gonna start with, I think I'll start with Mr. Hurst first, because Ms. Frisell got the opening statement. In 30 seconds, provide your take, this is 30 seconds, on the cause of the deficit, and then we'll get into more details about the budget next.
Sure. Well, my take on, on the reason we're in this deficit is because of bad economic forecasting that's been embedded into the budget. It's not that Linwood has had a severe drop in revenue. We, in fact, have collected more revenue in '25 than we did in '24, but it's fact that there, the fact that there were economic forecasts up here, our revenues are down here, this gap is, is a self-inflicted gap. It's $21 million in the biennium, and we're, it's a challenge to try to recover that money. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we did have some forecasting models that didn't pan out. We used a forecasting organization we'd used before for our sales tax, and we projected higher. We also projected more growth. We projected higher income from permits and inspections, and with the national economic crisis that's going on, those forecasts didn't pan out. Developers weren't developing because the interest rates were so high. And then we missed the mark when we were looking at trends and determining our red light camera tickets.
Okay. So, now we have four minutes to talk in more detail about this, and I, I would just like to prompt by, I heard Mr. Hurst say a few things that I imagine you might want to respond to. Maybe we could start there?
Sure. Mr. Hurst has been on our finance committee for quite a while, and if you're holding back on answers, I want to hear them, because we have spent hours, we have spent months and months of meeting with, with our team, with directors, with people from other cities, and saying, okay, how do we finance, how do we finesse our way out of here? And there is no way to finesse. As soon as I saw that, that our, our revenues weren't coming in, I immediately told directors, no more hiring if somebody leaves, unless they're essential, we're not going to replace that position. We had directors that had been holding on until after sound transit was done, before they retired. They wanted to see that project go. People get to retire. People age, and, and they're allowed to retire. They just happen to be choosing the last few years to do that. And I know Mr. Hurst has some feelings as to who should replace a, a director, and some of the, the replacements, we did a nationwide search, and, and we had better people in-house than what we had as a nationwide search, and he, he saw it differently than I did. Also, when it was time for our police chief, when, when our previous chief retired, I felt that the best chief was the one that we had in-house, that had been in-house since he was 19 years old. He knows our, our neighborhoods, he knows our situations, and I was more than happy to interview him, along with another deputy chief, and bring him on board. And I understand Mr. Hurst has some, some concerns with those decisions as well.
I'd like to, I'd like to get back to the budget and the deficit. So, I am, I have been chair of the finance committee for several years. This year, twice as chair, I asked for details on what kind of expenditures are being cut, and did not receive, receive those details. I asked it from the dais twice, and we did not receive that. And then the mayor did say, finally, well, on September 15th, you will get those details, and the directors will be there at that meeting. So, we did have the meeting, we got, we did get memos showing expenditure reductions and some of the details, but the directors, we were, the mayor started the meeting by saying we could not ask questions of the directors. And for me, that's been really the basis of this whole problem. There has not been transparency by the mayor, there hasn't been collaboration by the mayor. I look back at one of the crisis, recent economic crisis in Linwood created by COVID, and that the mayor then, Nicholas Smith, she made sure that we had meetings, joint meetings with the council, with directors, and with staff, and we had open conversations about who should be cut, or what should we cut, how we're gonna face it, because we thought that indeed, it was, our revenues were gonna fall off the face of the earth. Surprisingly, what happened was, because of a Supreme Court decision, we were able to collect sales tax purchased by people on Amazon, as long as it came into the city, we got the sales tax. And so, our sales tax did not fall like we thought it was. But the fact is, that was an open conversation and a transparent conversation, and that has, has not happened in this case.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question. Mr. Hurst, you have been serving on the Linwood City Council already for 10 years, and Ms. Frisell, you served on the, on the council for four years before being elected mayor in 2021. Can you name one experience prior to becoming an elected official that makes you the best choice for mayor? And remember, we'll talk more about your backgrounds and how they, it shaped you into leadership skills, and we're gonna start with you, Mr. Hurst.
Okay, sure. I think, as far as my background, I was employed as a factory agent for lighting manufacturers, and I ran a lot of large projects and quoted a lot of projects, specifically million-dollar projects with the military. And so, I think that gives me a grasp of, first, how do you deal with, with large amounts of money? And also, if you want to challenge, try to deal with the military on a project. And so, you have to have skills to, to be able to work with people. Thank you.
Time.
For me, I believe my accounting background has prepared me for this job. With accounting, you don't just look at numbers. At my level, we're looking at management decisions, we're looking at, are, are we staffing correctly? I have a very large business background. I think the largest company I worked for was Chicago Title, and the smallest was Ammon Paw Operations, but over a 40-year time span, I think in spreadsheet terms. When, when staff comes to me, when I see a problem in our community, I immediately start thinking of the steps, and that has served me well as mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. Time is up, but you're welcome to, to develop more on that if you want, of course.
Sure. Again, working with different departments, it's as if you have many businesses that you have to take into account. The finance department doesn't run the same as the police department, the, the parks department doesn't run the same as IT. So, having this wide variety of businesses that I've worked with, that I've, I've worked with owners and managers of, of these businesses, and it just gives me a perspective that helps me deal with things as, as the mayor. The other thing I do is I collaborate a lot. I'm not willing to take one answer and say, yes, we're gonna go with that. I want to learn about it, I want to collaborate, I want to talk to people who are in the field, I want to talk to the end users, I want to talk with our diverse population, and make sure that we've got the people at the table that are here, that the decision is going to impact. And I'm often reaching out to see who isn't at the table right now, and who do we need to talk to? Collaboration is, is the best thing we can do as a city.
Yes, thank you.
That'd be great to, to collaborate. I wish we were collaborating on this crisis. It wasn't, you know, the council was told a couple weeks ago that three of the five staff members who take care of the Linwood Senior Center were no longer employed. We were told that night that actually, we're gonna surplus two of the three buses that were used by the Linwood Senior Center for trips. And when I asked, could we not surplus those, those buses? I heard from the back of the room, one of the directors said, well, they're already in the auction area. Some auction company had them. It was stunning that there was no conversations between- It was stunning that there was no conversations between the administration and the council on this crisis. We keep struggling, trying to get information, trying to get information. It is not a transparent process. It's basically a slow walk, and I'm pretty sure, well, I know why it's a slow walk. It's because November 4th is coming. And once the election is over, then the hard decisions are going to be brought forward as far as revenue. And I have been told by one council member that the administration's already planning to take all our bank capacity, which is $3.3 million in property tax, and it'll be another increase in property tax. And in fact, it'll be 100% increase from where we were four years ago. And so it's just this inability to collaborate is what I see. And if I were going to say that I have an accounting background, I'd be questioning, why is there a $21 million deficit built into our budget then?
Do you care to respond to that?
Thank you. So, gosh, there's so much packed into there. We are collaborating. We are encouraging council to submit questions. The one night that I asked them to wait was because I wanted them to hear all of the picture. I didn't want them to focus on one department or one line item, but I wanted them to hear the revenue and the expense side. We then brought back, at their request, every director that they asked for. They continued to give us emails with questions. We wrote down questions. We pulled them together. We have sent question, answers to questions. We have had every department in front of them that they have asked for. What they haven't dealt with is revenue. And while we've been able to so far cut $12 million from expenses, council is still not taking a look at revenues to say what they are willing to back.
Yep, I think we are out of time. And I think now we have time for questions for...
It's, we're on to the next question?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
All right.
I'm sorry.
So this one, again, we're starting with the 30-second format first. And we'll start with Ms. Frizzell with the answer on the first one here. What is the biggest challenge facing Linwood in the next five years and why?
The biggest challenge is managing growth. In 1993, we have a document where over 200 people said, this is what we want Linwood to look like. We've been able to follow that plan up until recently, when we've got some state legislators that have changed the rules. And they want to densify our property. They think that they know better than we do how we should have our city. Our plan was to push multifamily housing out towards the mall, out towards transit, and protect our single-family homes.
We can talk more in a minute.
Sure. I think the biggest challenge is trying to make housing affordable. Almost half the residents in Linwood live in rental housing. And that's one of the reasons why I was down in Olympia advocating for rent stabilization bill, which did pass. I think too, though, that as far as making housing affordable, we also have to realize that 15% of the residents in Linwood are at the poverty level. We need to do programs to lift household incomes within Linwood.
Great discussion so far. So how do you address that? What are some solutions? Either one of you can start.
Yeah, I would say for me, since I brought up the issue of raising household incomes, I think, first of all, one of the things I want to do is to actually get a wage theft ordinance in Linwood. So many of our residents work at a minimum wage. And there have been instances in Linwood, both restaurants, where workers were not being paid what they were due and paid fairly. We also know on construction projects throughout the region, there are general contractors that are not fairly paying wages. And so part of my program is also to bring forward for city projects, either community workforce agreements or project labor agreements, which then we can actually have general contractors be mandated to start hiring people who live in Linwood. These are good-paying jobs. They're, you know, beneficial wage, sorry, jobs with benefits. They are not minimum wage jobs. And I think that's part of the vision that I see.
I have some concerns with those issues. Number one, it would limit the contractors who would work in Linwood. We want to be able to hire contractors who are willing to get to our price point. And if we start mandating that a certain percentage of someone's workforce has to live within eight square miles, I think we're going to miss out on that by quite a bit. If there's wage theft going on, and yes, I've heard about it myself, Labor and Industries handles that. We don't need to add another regulatory agency in Linwood to handle that. Labor and Industries has a whole department that deals with that. And it's best if they continue to deal with that. They've got the experience and the authority to make those changes happen. Going back to density, last year I testified in Olympia regarding a bill that said that contractors could come in and take down a single-family home and put up to four buildings on that property. And I think it's ridiculous. I think that then we get houses too densely together. And my concern there that I brought up at a council meeting, just as a note, the mayor's office doesn't get to vote on anything. That's only council members get to vote. I get to express an opinion on occasion. But one of my opinions on that was, then we need to put sprinklers in every one of those new developments. There need to be automatic fire sprinklers, because if one starts to have a problem, all of a sudden, you're going to have four houses up in flames. And Mr. Hurst, and I believe most of the rest of the council, opted not to include that in our code. And that's disappointing, because to me, safety is a big deal. And if we're going to continue to ask people to live in such small places, then we need to be responsible to our community.
Yeah, and I think that's a... That's not being cognizant of the type of materials that now goes into housing. In addition, what was the problem with the sprinklers was it raises the cost of building a home dramatically. As far as safety, even the charts that the National Fire Protection Association has is that really, life savings starts when you go to smoke detectors that are wired, not battery-powered, but wired. That is where the biggest drop in life savings is. And then adding sprinklers is just marginal.
Thank you. I think we have time.
Renee? We're on to the next one. And I don't, do we have any tickets in the bowl?
Well, guess what? We have number 444. And we have...
I have to believe this is your time.
I am really curious. Are you going to ask the question? You don't have a question?
Okay, all right.
Okay. So we have, we have two people, the two tickets, 464 and 465. 464 and 465. Okay.
Is that allowed?
You have a ticket, you have a ticket. And I guess...
That's never happened before. I'm just going to say, this is a first.
Yes, please have a seat.
I have a voter, too.
Yes, yes, but please, yeah, have a seat, both of you. And do you have a question also that you want to ask? You do? Okay, so I think we will have time for that one. And we'll start with you.
Hi, my name is Scarlett. I'm a high school senior, and I serve on the admin school district board. My question for you today is, how can you increase more job opportunities for youth? And I would love to hear what makes you the best candidate to advocate for the needs of the youth population in Linwood.
Great.
Yes, go ahead.
Let me answer the last one first, because I'm the old guy here. But I did strongly support the youth commission, and I think that's the voice that we need to listen to. I mean, I do believe that there are a lot of opportunities for young people to be involved in our government to, I just am so excited about the youth commission, hoping that you will bring forward ideas that are beyond the perspectives of an old guy like me. But at the same time, I do believe that we, as a city, need to be able to produce, I think you were talking about getting jobs, is, yeah. That is one reason why I am really contemplating being able to provide perhaps an ordinance that will increase the minimum wage in Linwood. I, oh, okay.
Time is up. Unfortunately, time is up.
I had an entry-level job when I was in the 11th grade. I got paid a buck ninety an hour. I think that makes me a little bit of an old lady, too. We need young people that want to go to work, that want to figure out how to get up in the morning and how to have a job and how to, it's a, it's an entry-level job. And I think we do need more voices, more inspiration as to what we can do as a city. As a city, we have over 200 jobs that are seasonal and part-time, and a lot of those are camp counselors and rec department people, because they just do such a great job at managing our summer youth program. As far as other stores that might be really engaging with our young people, I would think retail. And we certainly have a lot of that around.
Time. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right. Quinn Van Order, again, and once again, speaking on my own capacity, not representing the Parks and Recreation Board. Councilmember Hurst, you actually lightly touched on the subject of my question, which is banked capacity to raise rates. We have a giant budget shortfall. We have made a lot of cuts, understandably, in reaction to this, but we need to bring in more revenue. If we do targeted taxes on businesses, they're going to raise their prices, so it's going to hit us regardless. So my question is, do you support the use of banked capacity?
Right now, I do not, because I don't think there's been enough study as far as what else can we do in this city as far as collaboration in reducing the expenditures. I know, you know, we did lay off nine people, but at the same time, in January, the city council wanted and requested a management audit or efficiency audit to make sure that our departments were all right-sized. And that never happened. And, you know, I think of our finance department, has 24 individuals in it. That's very large for a city our size. So I think we still need to be looking at, how can we right-size departments? How can we be able to make some wise decisions as far as how the city is run?
Repeat your question. I kind of got off on some of Mr. Hurst's points here.
Certainly. So basically, my question is, do you support the use of our banked capacity to bring more revenue to the city?
So again, the mayor doesn't get to determine that. It is a council decision. What we will be bringing to the council is a series of options. And one of those is going to be property tax. Another one could be an increase on utility taxes. A big one that's not going to cost anyone anything is taking our two and a half months of expense reserves and taking those down to two months. So I do support finding an answer. A big part of this crisis that we have had to do with 27 new positions that council approved in 2023, 2024, without any revenue attached to it. So we are still incorporating $12 million worth of employees into our budget, which has contributed to the problem that we're facing now. But I'm ready to put all options on the table. We've given options to the council a couple of different times, and we haven't heard back from them. So we'll take it to the next step.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Isabel. DEI everywhere is under attack. For a city whose motto is "all are welcome," can you please explain the decision to let go of the sole director of DEI, whose job it is to make sure that our city and our programs and our policies are equitable for all? And two, did council get a say in this decision? And three, what steps are you willing to do to rectify this?
I think that's only directed to me. Is that all right? Because Mr. Hurst may not have any input on that.
I think we can be flexible.
All right.
Yes.
So we look, we look at our department holistically. Although we had a race and social justice coordinator, he was definitely not the only one doing the work. We have an internal group of people called LEED, Linwood, something about equity, diversity. I'm sorry, I don't have the acronym on the tip of my tongue. We have a lot of people from each department giving us input on DEI. We have a fantastic DEI commission. I met with them last night, and we talked through all of the issues that they have. DEI is not leaving the city. In fact, it is, it is just as strong as it was. All of the events that we do, those are carried out through our events department. Ashley and Marielle, we got a list from them today as to anything left over that hasn't been done for this year.
Time.
Do I get to just quickly say? Yes, we were not involved in that decision. The mayor is the administrator of the city, and she can fire people at will, as long as they're not union. But I would say that the DEI commission, what I would hope for the DEI commission in the future would be more active in bringing forward advisory to the council. That's one of the ideas of our advisory commissions, is for those commissions to bring forward ideas to the council. Our DEI commission tried a couple of times, and they were shot down by fellow council members. I'll agree to that. But that's, we need, because that position is now gone, we need to rely more on the DEI commission to bring forward ideas to us, to bring forward concepts. Thank you.
I'm not at all aware of the situation that Mr. Hurst speaks of. I do know that when I was on council and I was council president, council has a meeting every Wednesday, one meeting a month on a Wednesday. And I would use that time to bring, to ask each council member to report to the rest of council members what their commissions were up to. And we did that for a full year, and then it has fallen off ever since then. And I have tried, when Mr. Hurst was council president and with the current council president, bring that back. What's the purpose of having advisory committees? What's the purpose of having council liaisons if you're never going to talk about what's going on?
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. We have time for one more question, and I just remind you, yes, please go straight to the question, just to be respectful with time.
Being respectful. What policies and procedures are you willing to change in order to make public safety feel improved when we're under federal threats because of immigration customs and enforcement? Currently, Oregon is being under attack, and things that public have asked is seizing flock, seizing unmarked police cars, seizing undercover raids or whatever the police are doing at the stores. These are things that people have requested to make sure that we can not only trust the police when they're doing it, they're going to be identified in uniform and in cars.
Time.
And to make that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me, first of all, I do believe our police chief, when he says that he's not going to cooperate with ICE, but at the same time, the flock issue is really important. The way it was presented to the council was through a Washington retail organization grant. It was mainly pitched that this will help us fight shoplifting, will be able to identify those cars. Now we're finding out, even though that, we've been told that the database is only on there for 30 days, it goes to a national database. And I am not convinced and 100% sure that that's something we want to participate in. I want to make, I want it to be investigated, whether does flock keep all that information? You know, there's been anecdotal instances where flock has been used, it was used to track a young woman who was going to have an abortion out of Texas. It was, they tracked through flock. If that's the type of purpose, we need to really reassess that position.
Thank you.
I thought your question, I... I thought your question, I didn't know your question had to do with Flock. I thought it had to do with ICE and immigration. Is that correct? I want to make sure I'm answering the right question. I'm sorry.
The question is, what policies and procedures can be changed? And suggestions that community has brought forward is Flock and the police with undercover, not using undercover situation.
Yeah, so of course, we can change policing. But right now, we are staying steady with the process that we have. We have not had any situations arising within our borders. Our police chief is part of the WASPIC group, which is Washington Sheriff's and Police Personnel. And he's staying abreast of that at all times. Next week, I'm hosting a meeting and we'll have the county sheriff at a dinner. And we're going to be hearing from her as to what they're doing countywide.
All right. Well, thank you very much to both and to all the candidates and...
We have closing statements, Hurst.
Yes.
So we'll start with Councilmember Hurst. Your closing statement, 30 seconds.
Great. All right, I'm not here to talk about the past. I'm here to build Linwood's future. We are faced with some severe challenges in Linwood. The finances of the city must be put back on solid foundation. Housing affordability, keeping Linwood safe, and raising household incomes in Linwood will need policies with vision and courage. As your next mayor, I am ready to face these challenges. Our city deserves leadership that listens, leads, and delivers. Thank you.
My priorities as we go into the next four years is public safety. Our people deserve to feel safe when they're on our streets, when they're in our stores, when they're at the transit center. And public safety is vastly important to peace of mind. Another area is transportation. One of the groups talked about transportation and I wanted to jump in on that. But we need to have space where people can get to where they want to be and get home again.
Bad music. Thank you very much, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, Claire, for chiming. I want to thank both of you and I want to thank all of you for coming. Remember, this will be archived on YouTube. It will also be archived on your Facebook page, I'm assuming, as well as your YouTube channel. And thanks to Edmonds College for hosting us. And the candidates said they would stick around and we'll be out in the lobby if you want to chat further with them. Thank you for coming tonight and we were proud to present this to you.